Good evening, I'd like to have a roll call as to how many members are here and who they are. I'll start with me, Wayne Piagi, present. Who else is here?
Wayne Deal.
Nat Barnes.
Aaron Gergenti.
Ray Garden.
So there's five members present, Pam?
With you, yes.
Okay, could you please read the governor's announcement for the pandemic?
Sure. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 30A, Subsection 18, and the governor's March 15 and July 2, 2020 orders, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Adams is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in the order. We have posted today's agenda in accordance with open meeting law, which included the call and information for the meeting. Despite our best efforts, if we are not able to provide for real-time access for the public to participate in today's meeting, a recording of this meeting can be made available by request as this meeting is being recorded using the Zoom platform.
Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
I'd like to begin the agenda tonight by election of officers. We need a chair and a vice chair. Anybody want to make any motions?
I would move that Wayne Piagi be elected Chair of the Adams zoning board of appeals.
And I'll nominate, this is Glenn, I'll nominate myself as Vice Chair.
There's a motion on the floor first.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
My second motion.
You second the motion?
Yes.
Any... Any discussion? Can we have a roll call vote?
This is Glenn, I say yes.
Nat Barnes, yes.
Aaron Gergenti, yes.
Ray Garden, yes.
And Wayne Piagi, yes. So moved. I'd like to...
I would nominate Wayne Deal as Vice Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Can I have a roll call vote?
Nat Barnes, aye.
Wayne Deal, yes.
Ray Garden, yes.
Aaron Gergenti, yes.
And Wayne Piagi, yes. So moved, thank you gentlemen. We can start tonight. Pam, would you read the first applicant request, please?
Application of Cumberland Farms, Inc. for property located at 95 Commercial Street, requesting a special permit under subsection 125, attachment 14, new schedule of the Adams zoning by law to operate a 24-hour convenience store with four fueling islands in a B2 zoning district.
All right, can we have the first applicant? We'd like you to state your case.
Absolutely, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for the record. Tom Reedy, an attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of Cumberland Farms relative to its special permit request for 24 hours of operation at the Commercial Street site. With me this evening from First Hartford, the project developer, Peter Jeskey. We've also got Luke DiStefano from Bowler Engineering, a site designer, and then our traffic engineer from McMahon Associates, Maureen Schlebeck. So maybe just, you know, a pretty simple, high level, before I turn it over to Luke to walk you through the site plan. This is at 95 Commercial Street. Obviously, recently, you know, this past year, the town voted to rezone a whole swath of Route 8, including these parcels, to B2 zoning. And so the use of the retail convenience store with gasoline filling stations are allowed by right. We are going to need to go through a site plan review process. We have already been in front of the Conservation Commission. We're working through some peer review comments based on our proximity to the river. We've also been in front of the Traffic Commission and received an endorsement from them. And so we're in front of you this evening requesting 24 hours of operation. As you'll see in the application packet, you know, we've somewhat, obviously this isn't our first rodeo dealing with retail convenience stores and gas stations proximate to residential uses. And so we've, on our own initiative, offered to turn down the audio advertisement, you know, between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. What I will say is that there needs to be maintained communication from the interior of the store to the gas pumps by operation of Massachusetts law. And so while we can control the audio advertisements, it would prohibit the audio advertisements for that time. We cannot prohibit the communication. So, you know, that's one of the things that we looked to do on our own initiative. And I think one of the other slides, once we end up going through the presentation, will show you that there is no light bleed on this site at the property line. That there are zero foot candles. So really, it's just a direct and intense light downcast. So the light does not bleed across the property lines. I think with that, Luke, I'll turn it over to you if, and Mr. Chairman, if I could share my screen and I can have Luke walk through the presentation.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Tom. For the record, Luke DiStefano with Bowler Engineering. We are the civil site designer for the project. As Tom mentioned, this is a proposed redevelopment of the existing property located at 95 Commercial Street in the City of Adams. As you can see in the aerial on the screen in front of you, it basically comprises, and Tom, if you want to circle kind of the outline, I forgot I don't have control of the screen at the moment, so I'm moving my mouse to no avail. But, long story short, the site is going to be a complete razored rebuild. It's a little over one and a half acres in total area. And that entire site will be, as I mentioned, razed and rebuilt. And if approved as designed, Cumberland Farms is currently looking to construct a roughly 4,380 square foot convenience store located basically in the center of the property facing Commercial Street. That use, that convenience store use will be serviced by 27 parking spaces located on the north, east, and west side, or south sides of the property. There will be four multi-product fueling dispensers proposed beneath an overhead canopy located again where Tom is outlining on the screen. Because each dispenser can fuel a maximum of two cars at any given time, the site would have a maximum capacity of eight vehicles fueling at any one moment. Those dispensers would be served by two underground storage tanks located in the south portion of the property. As shown, the site is proposed to be accessed via two full movement curb cuts, one off of Commercial Street and a second off of Prospect. As you can see hopefully from the red green, Cumberland Farms has taken great care to maximize green space on the property. We are very cognizant of our neighbors to the west and to the north, so we've done everything we can to provide adequate vegetative and structural screening to those properties. We have a proposed fence along the entire western edge of the property. And as you can see, we've provided a significant amount of landscaping along those areas as well. In addition to the landscaping improvements, the entire site will be upgraded from a utility standpoint. We are proposing all underground utilities to the property as well as a very comprehensive stormwater management system. If you've had an opportunity or taken the time to review the drainage report that was submitted, although I'm not sure if it was submitted as part of this application, we're going to have a significant, or the post-developed site will result in a significant improvement from a stormwater quality standpoint, not only for the volume of stormwater exiting the property, but the quality of that runoff as well. Again, as Tom mentioned, we've been before the ConCon, we're well aware of our proximity to the river just to the north. So we've taken steps to provide adequate safeguards to preserve those waters as well. And then as Tom mentioned, the other significant improvement will be lighting. Lighting with these types of facilities now is designed to put light where we want it and where we need it, which would be within parking areas at curb cuts and within the fueling area itself. But the lighting has been designed in such a way that it will not result in any light trespass either onto our abutting neighbors or onto any of the abutting lights of way. And again, we do have a photometric plan that we'd be happy to call up and walk through in more detail if needed. And with that, I'm certainly more than happy to answer any specific questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Nat Barnes. Would like to ask some questions of the site designer, please.
You certainly can, yes.
Looking at the landscape plan now that I have the detail in front of me, the landscaping, when I'm looking at it, it appears there's a lot of landscaping along Elm Street. The landscaping between the residential properties and the parking area and the store actually seems pretty sparse to me. And a lot of it is deciduous rather than evergreen, so certainly parts of the year, it would not provide any screening. I mean, I think given the location, just my impression is, this is a pretty sensitive area and would not be putting in a considerable visual screen beyond just the fence. You know, landscaping ought to serve that purpose. So I'm wondering what further consideration you have given to beefing up the landscaping.
I'm sure we have, that comment has been brought up a couple of different times now, and we're certainly willing to add some additional landscaping to satisfy that requirement. I would certainly want to talk it over with our landscape architecture department, but we could certainly provide, what I would think you would want would be some additional evergreen landscaping along that buffer or along that property line where Tom is indicating to help add to the visual or vegetative screen along those edges.
Not just that one, I think the one to the northwest, got two residences there as well. And, you know, it's, I mean, the one's pretty obvious. The other two, they're just as impacted. And frankly, the one immediately to the north, the house is on that property and they're looking at your side parking lot.
Sure, we'll be more than happy to take a look at that.
Yeah, and maybe just to follow up on that, and obviously we need to go through site plan approval with the planning board. So, you know, whether you'd want to either make a recommendation to them that they condition their approval on, you know, sufficient screening to protect adjacent properties, or if you'd want to put it on this approval. I think, you know, in either instance, we'd be amenable to having that sort of condition or the requirement to provide that.
You know, our purview is the 24-hour operation, and I'm primarily concerned at our level with the light spillover and activities at night after standard business hours. Not standard for you, but per retail uses. I'm very sensitive to this in this neighborhood.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from the board members? Seeing no. Do the board members have any questions to the answers on the special permit request?
Wayne, I've got a few in reviewing this. Again, this is Nat Barnes, and I'm not trying to hog the conversation here, guys. So what lighting will be installed, if any, on the southwest and west side of the building?
On the building itself, yes?
On the building itself.
So I am just going to bring up the photometric plan. So you can see... So I don't know, if you could all see the screen, you'll see that the... And if you were asking about, you know, the building itself, I think we've got some, Luke, they're either recessed or wall packs here.
Yeah, it's generally, sorry, Tom, it's generally you have a series of soffit lighting as well as some wall packs to provide what is essentially security lighting over some of the doors. But you could see that the lighting levels, if you're able to see on the screen, the lighting levels are very low as you, you know, immediately extend away from the building. So it's really some accent lighting to provide light on the front of the store as well as some security lighting around the other sides.
You've got wall packs along the northerly side, soffit lighting along the westerly side, and then a couple of wall packs here, and then soffit lighting all throughout here. You've got your, I'll say freestanding pole lights here, 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 and then on the other side, here, and here. And then when you're looking at the property line, 0.0, 0.1, 0.1, 0.2, 0.3, 0.1, 0.0, then you've got a bunch of 0, 0, 0, 1, 0, 0, 0, 0, 0, 0, 0. And you'll see that that, those 0.0s will follow the property line and then obviously dissipate before you get there. Especially if you follow my cursor, you've got 0.0s, you know, all through here, and this back piece will all be dark.
If you go to page three there, Tom, there's actually a rendering. If you keep going.
There you go, nice, nice heat map.
And it's important to note too, that all lighting proposed will be full cut off, downlight, again, designed to put the light where we want it and not anywhere else.
Okay. Or just looking at that back parcel, the one that is not really very usable pretty well, at least as far as I can tell, yeah, they have that one. What provisions are you going to have for security back there? I can just see that as a convenient little spot, a little thing out late in the evening, the power, which would certainly be a nuisance to the neighbors.
Yeah, the entire western edge of the site is fenced, but the Cumberland Farms also has an extensive CCTV camera system that they use for security around their entire site.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
Now that's, those were, those were my questions, thank you.
All right, any other board members have questions? All right, um, I'm going to, I'm going to open up the floor to the public. If the public wants to speak, just put your name and a, before you start, state your name and address so we know who you are. Anybody want to talk to the public?
I'll go first if nobody else will.
Put your name and address, ma'am.
My name is Elizabeth Irwin. My address is 32 Temple Street in Adams. I'm right behind the proposed project. I'd like a point of clarification, please. Could you repeat for me what hour you're planning on starting the commercials over the audio?
So 6:00 a.m., just when we would start, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. would be the hours that those audio advertisements would exist. From 9:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., there would only be communication from the inside of the store through the pumps as required by law.
Okay, um, so could you give me an idea of how regularly those advertisements play? And if that includes music? And what is the volume in which they play at?
Sure, I think it does include music. And I think as far as the advertisements go, and maybe Peter or Luke, correct me if I'm wrong. Don't make somebody go through, oh, for fuel.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Sure. So it does include satellite radio, I believe. And then the audio advertisements occur at the pump. And then the, I believe they only occur at the pump when somebody is actually fueling at the pump.
I understand it as well, Tom.
And do we have a level on how loud that's going to be?
I don't have that information. I don't know what the decibel level of the advertiser.
Okay, so let me just put this out here as one of my biggest concerns. I own the house right behind you. I own a two-family house and I rent the other side. And at our last meeting, I had asked you guys to consider, during the warmer months, starting the advertisements and the music a little bit later while your neighbors have their windows open. And it's only really from May to October up here that we actually have our windows open. But since we all would prefer not listen to this first thing in the morning, I'm going to ask you to again, consider that because it has a direct financial impact on what I can charge for the rental of the property that I own.
And so, I mean, 7:00 a.m., is that, I mean, that is...
About 7:30.
You could be like the old Folgers jingle though. Once you start hearing the advertisements, it'll just bring the tenants right out of bed and over to Cumberland Farms for their coffee.
So let me explain what I do for a living. I work at Canyon Ranch and I am a massage therapist. And I work until 10 o'clock at night. I don't get home most evenings till, I don't know, 11, 11:15. It would be really nice if in the summer I got up at 7:30 to a sound instead of, you know, 6, 6:37. You know, I know my neighbors, my tenants, we all, you know, have to be out the door and somewhere, but, you know, starting the morning off with our own chosen form of information and music is a lot nicer than somebody else's.
Yeah, Tom, I think it's also important to note, you know, generally the ambient noise of the roadway is going to be louder than what you're hearing from the speakers. And it's also important to note that on the dispensers in this location are going to be perpendicular to the neighbors to the west. So it, you know, it's designed in such a way, just, you know, a little bit by happenstance to help reduce noise trespass to the neighbors on the west side as well. So I think, you know, 7, 7:30, once traffic starts rolling along Commercial Street, that ambient noise from the traffic is going to be louder than what you have from the speakers operating on the dispensers.
Again, since we don't have a level from you guys, it's a little hard to make that decision. But I would just again, ask you to consider your name.
This is Ben on the Adams CPA. We have in our bylaws, a number of 65 dB is the proximate level of commercial and industrial zones.
Okay, well.
Believe me. That's 20 dBs lower than the horn strokes. So that's pretty loud. But if I could, if I could speak as a building inspector, the mobile station down the street, Holland Avenue, that also has the intercom system and also has the little square place where it plays music and advertising some things. And I know I might be right, but it's not that loud here. But I would like to have a dB level, but, you know.
Yeah, and I can't imagine we'd exceed 65 decibels at the property line.
Yeah, that's what our zoning, yeah, thought does permit. And then we also say in residential zones, it would be at 40.
Liz, do you have any other questions? Anything concerns?
Yes, I have one. Peter Gutman here.
Waco Street.
What's your, what's your address, sir?
6 Quaker Street, Adams.
Yes.
Former member of the zoning board. I'm pretty familiar with what you people are going through. And I think in consideration for the neighbors, since the decibel levels weren't registered on the plan, and if the board has a concern about that, the unknown, you can condition that on a special permit, that that can be reviewed.
All right. We can discuss that and when we're done, public comment.
You can discuss that when you're making the motion, because you can put the condition in on the motion, right? Thank you.
Is there anything, is there anything else there? Nothing?
No, that's it. Nice job on the plans. It's going to look a lot better than what's there now. I wish I was living across the street from you. You ought to come up to Quaker Street and see what we have to put up with.
Thank you. Are there any other neighbors, any other public comment? Nothing, nobody else has anything for open comment? I'm going to close public comment. And I'm going to open the meeting to... Just give me a second here. Does anybody have any discussion or want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion is that we approve the application of Cumberland Farms Incorporated for property located at 95 Commercial Street. They're requesting special per- located in ninety-five Commercial Street because request, they requesting special permit under one twenty-five attachment. One calling for, quote, new schedule, unquote, of that in zoning bylaw to operate a twenty-four hour convenience store with four fueling islands and a beach. Zoning history. I will condition that. On limiting the outdoor advertising between the hours of seven and AM and nine PM. And also that the noise level, the sound level from the advertising and music be limited to fifty dB.
Can I just clarify one thing? I think you wanna limit it from nine PM to seven AM? And not seven AM to nine PM?
Okay.
I think we're trying, you're saying the same thing, I think, just.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
And I only need it to be from, from, in the warm weather. That's my only concern. Once the windows are closed, it's not so bad.
Are you good with that amendment? Is you good with that or do you wanna restate it?
No, I'm good with it.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to offer a substitute motion. To approve subject, um, to approve the request for twenty-four hour operations. Several conditions, and I will read these, they're extensive. Uh, the applicant shall provide additional landscaping to be installed along the southwest and northern edge of the project adequate to screen the project from abutting properties along Elm, Temple and Prospect Streets. The applicant shall integrate the enhanced plantings into the overall landscaping plan for the project, be approved by the planning board as part of the site plan approval and proper approval of building permit. Number two, applicant shall control the intensity of exterior site lighting, canopy pumps, building exterior sound, et cetera, during low traffic hours to prevent late trespass on abutting properties during late evening and overnight hours after nine PM and before six AM. The applicant shall provide a lighting plan for the project to be approved by the planning board as part of site plan approval and prior to approval of a building permit. Number three, the applicant shall control use of outside speakers and communications between customers at the pump and the cashier, particularly during low traffic hours. No noise from speakers shall be audible on any adjoining residential property. Four, applicant shall be prohibited from commercial trash pickup between the hours of seven PM and seven AM Monday through Friday and between seven PM and nine AM on Saturdays and Sundays. Uh, and number, uh, I, that, that does it. Thank you. Would be my motion.
Pam, did you get all that?
Yes, thanks.
So the, the motion stand, all right. Anybody wanna second the motion?
I'll second that's, uh, motion.
All right. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, if, if we could, uh, just before we go down the road and then we've, we've got a motion and then we've got a, either repeal a decision or come in for a modification, I think it just would be wiser to maybe have this discussion.
Sure.
And it, there's really just, uh, probably two parts of it. The first is the, the control of the intensity of the exterior light. Now, I think, so we've obviously provided the photometric plan showing that there's no light bleed at the property line. That would be, um, you know, our evidence of controlling the intensity of the light. Cumberland Farms, given the type of use, given that it's twenty-four hours, given that folks will be, let's say, under the, the canopy in taking money out, putting their credit card in, um, we wanna make sure that that's appropriately illuminated and so it, it's, we don't like to touch the, the lighting on the site and that's why we direct it the way we direct it with the full cutoff luminary. So as long as it's understood that the, the lighting plan that we have in the photometrics showing that they don't bleed, that is our effort to, quote, control the intensity of the exterior light, but I don't think we'll be able to modify, you know, the, the timing. You know, it, it gets dark and then we turn it down, which is almost the antithesis of what you wanna do, um, for security. So that would be one point. And then the other points would be relative to the noise. As I said before, we do need by operation of law to provide, um, the ability for the interior and the exterior to speak, so the, the folks at the pump with the person who is monitoring the pumps are required to speak. So that's something we would be doing. And then it's just, it's a little bit concerning to me to not allow any noise at, on a, a adjoining property, um, from any of the, the audio, you know, and it sounded like, and I'm not sure if it was at any time or during certain hours of the day, but, you know, I, I think the, the fifty decibel at the property line is, you know, a, a lot more reasonable, um, given the fact that, you know, we, we could be open, there's going to be vehicles there, car doors opening, you know, car doors closing and, and frankly, we could be open from, you know, one AM to midnight and be twenty-three hours and we wouldn't be asking for any special relief. So, you know, we're obviously looking to maintain the twenty-four hours because we think it makes sense. But respectfully, the requirement of not having any noise on an adjoining residential property is just, frankly, in, infeasible. I mean, there, there is going to be noise that, that is going to go there, so I think.
And, and can I do something?
No noise from the speakers. We're not talking about the other necessary noise that goes on doors.
I was just using the other.
Indicated that the speaker noise is very low. That's my experience sitting at a gas pump. I don't think it carries very far anyway. Um, but nonetheless, it is a concern to the, the adjoining property owners that made that clear.
Understood. And, and my example of the car doors, et cetera, is the fact that there, there will be noise at the site, not to say that, you know, noise generally is going to be prohibited. It is just, it, it puts frankly, a, a non-objective measure in the hands of a neighbor to say, you know, sitting there and I've got, I've heard something from the speaker versus, you know, the acquisition of a decibel meter, go stand on the property line, say, play the speakers, is it too loud? And then you can adjust. And, and to me, that is the more appropriate objective measure, so.
And if I'm, if I may, as the neighbor, I'm gonna agree with Tom on that, uh, cause I don't want you to feel like I'm giving you a hard time.
The public discussion, uh, part of this is over.
Oh, sorry.
So does anybody wanna make a, uh, an amendment to the motion or do you wanna let the motion stand?
I think, I think we need some clarification. We're talking about these decimal numbers and nobody really seems to know what the decibels are at from these speakers, nor what that means. So if fifty decibels might be as loud as a helicopter, I, I have no idea. I knew it, but, you know, we, I think we need to get some actual facts about how loud they are and how likely this to carry. I mean, from my experience, I've been at many Cumberland Farms and you can, when I'm on the other side of the car filling up my pump, filling up my tank, I can barely hear the speaker from, you know, six feet away. So, I mean, it, I think fifty decibels might be too loud, you know?
Um, is Luke still on? Is Luke still available?
I am.
Who cares?
What is, what is a, can you give a couple examples of what a fifty deci- what fifty decibels is? At the line?
You know, I, I, I really, i- it's difficult. Uh, I'd have to.
It is.
Do a little bit more research. I mean, generally, you know, when you get to, you know, the one twenty, one thirty range, you're, you're talking, you know, extremely loud. Uh, but, you know, sixty-two, and I think Tom mentioned this earlier, I would be very, very, very surprised if the speaker decimal level from these devices is anywhere near that. Uh, a- again, we'd certainly wanna confirm and get back to you, but my understanding, and this has come up, I've been designing gas stations for almost thirty years, it comes up often. My understanding is that at, I think it's forty or fifty feet from the speaker, the volume level is basically zero. We, we don't have any residences within forty, fifty feet of the speaker and that's directly in front of the speaker as well. So my understanding is that, again, th- these speakers are not gonna be an issue for the neighbors, but we will, you know, as Tom mentioned, we will put in some adequate safeguards to be good neighbors, but I, I don't think this is a concern, uh, that really needs a whole lot of attention.
Well, the closest, I'm sorry.
The landscaping will also buffer the sound.
Correct.
Also, the, the houses on Temple Street, and correct me if I'm wrong, the houses on Temple Street are, is going to be, if you look at the property line, if you look at the, the diagram, the pictures, that's the houses, a buffer zone, the building itself, and in the middle of the parking lot are gonna be the pumps, correct?
Correct. So the, the building's gonna provide a lot of buffer from noise.
Right.
Of itself.
Yeah.
And then the fence.
So I think.
Landscaping, et cetera.
So I think, I think that's gonna solve itself. It's not gonna be, the building is gonna, is gonna lose, it's gonna be a huge buffer for that, for the noise level. Um, can we agree on, on the current or do we need to modify the, the motion?
I mean, for, for reference, so, uh, average office background is about fifty decibels. Um, normal conversational speech at five to ten feet is sixty decibels. An air compressor at a hundred feet is seventy decibels. Um, a quiet residential neighborhood is forty decibels. So just to kind of give a sense of where you're, we're at between the, you know, the forty, the fifty and the, and the sixty, the fifty is that average office background in the quiet residential neighborhood is, is forty decibels. And so, you know, Luke and Peter, I don't know if forty at the property line, you know, might be something that's adequate and maybe splits the difference between zero and, I know we said sixty, but, you know, zero and, and sixty, but that forty might, um, because that's the quiet residential neighborhood, maybe, maybe.
Yeah, I, I think we, you know, and again, that, that would be fine, I, I believe with, with us and, and, you know, we've, we've looked, as Tom just read, we've, we've run into town in upstate New York that I was a part of as a job where we had a similar, a very similar thing and I think we're able to easily, uh, clarify and, and quell the neighbors' concerns with, uh, with sharing the data that Tom just did. So my apologies, I should've shared that, uh, fifteen minutes ago, but, um, I, I knew I had it and I just dug it up. So that's a chart I can reference where that is.
It's, uh, Wayne, it's not the, I'm less concerned about the noise issue for the property directly behind the building. It's the one on the, it's the residence on the corner of Elm there, where the pointers on.
On the northern side, yes.
And the house on Prospect Street, um, which actually is further away from the speakers. And that was all I was worried about were noises, broadcast noise, not normal operational noise that you're gonna have because it's commercial operations. Um, and, yeah, I mean, I sort of have a feeling we're discussing something that probably really isn't an issue at this point, but it's still like to see a control in there about it because some other operator buys you guys out and wants to blast something out the speakers. If we don't have some control, these folks may be subjected to, you know, fairly constant broadcast stuff, um, you know, twenty-four hours a day. And I don't think that's, that's fair for them. I'm trying to get some control in here over something that, you know, and clearly if it's late at night, which is our purview, then, you know, that's a nuisance to the neighbors.
But I think we're saying nine o'clock at night, no noise. Right? We're, we're turning off our speakers at nine o'clock. We're not turning them back on till seven AM and whether that's seven AM May to October, seven AM twelve months out of the year, but there's not gonna be any, so, you know, to start, you said, no, no noise, no audio advertising, no speaker noise to, to these properties between nine PM and, and seven AM. From seven AM to nine PM, we would think it's reasonable to have some sort of decibel level measurement at the property line if, if the, the board is insisting on including. You know, we would feel comfortable with, you know, turning it off and then obviously not having any of that, uh, speaker noise during that time.
Does that satisfy the board?
Yes, it does mean. And I would say that that property line decimal level should be in that range of forty to fifty, cause once you get past below that, it doesn't happen. I mean, out in the woods someplace, you're gonna be at thirty, forty in there. Just the wind blowing is gonna be thirty.
Right.
Noise.
So do we wanna, do we want this motion to stand or do we want it to amend?
Um, I would, there is the maker of the motion, um, amenable to amending it on that.
All right.
Third condition, the applicant shall control use of outside speakers and communications between customers at the pump and the cashier. Uh, the, the, uh, advertising communications and any music associated with it shall be limited to the hours of seven AM to nine PM. And will not be allowed between nine PM and seven AM. Um, I don't think we need to set a decibel level other than standing one in the bywall because the speakers really don't carry that far anyway, but, um, so I would amend it that, to that fashion line.
All right. Um, did you get that, Pam?
Yes, thank you.
The second.
Okay.
And as a, since I seconded the, uh, the original one, I will second the amendment. The amended motion.
We have a second. Do we have any more? What's that, Pam? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought Pam said something. Um, since we have a second, is there any other discussion? Thank you. Can I have a roll call vote?
When Neil says aye, Ray Gargan aye, Dak Barnes aye.
Aaron Trigenti aye.
Wayne Piagie aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
And I don't think there's anything else, right Pam? I, we can do, we can move on to, uh, old business?
Um, Chairman, uh.
Yes.
Would you let the applicants know about the decision notice procedure?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh. Just so you gentlemen know, the town will prepare within fourteen days the decision notice to the town clerk's office and follow this, following this, there is a twenty-day appeal period before the applicant may obtain the final decision notice. Pam Geer, Pam Geary will send you a notification of this in the days ahead.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
It's been great.
Thank you.
Pam has been fantastic, so. That's it, keep it up.
She always is.
Uh, yes. We'll see you later. Thank you.
Great night.
Okay, anything for new business? Nothing? Anything for old business? I guess I did that backwards, but anything for old business?
Chairman?
Yes.
This PM again, um, under the new. Just Pam again. Um, under the new business, could we announce those three items about Mr. Ryan Miller? Mr. Gargan and Mr. Tenzar?
I don't have any of that in front of me, Pam.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Did you want me? Did you want me to?
Could you please?
Sure. So, um. Under new business, David Ryan Miller was appointed by the Board of Selectmen to serve as an alternate member of the zoning board at this point in time. Um, Raven Gargan is a newly appointed, um, member. He will become a permanent member of the zoning board at this time. Um, serving tonight as his, at, at his first meeting. Uh, acting chairman Brian Tenzar resigned from the zoning board on March seventeen, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Pam. Does anything, anybody have anything else?
Uh, just one thing that I would encourage all the board members to do when we have applications like this. I don't know how many of you. Went out and walked around on the sidewalks. You know, you don't have to make it a formal site inspection, but lots of times you can kind of just walk around and sort of. You know, put yourself in the neighbor's shoes, that kind of thing. And, you know, it's pretty helpful.
I did drive around. Think to get out and walk around.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's a nice day for it, you know? You know, so, and the other thing is, I mean, these, you know, having this brought to us in raining. At least is a starting point, at least really helps me. You know, we come in cold and be trying to think about weather conditions and, and state them clearly in a way that's.
Yeah.
That, that, you know, it gets on the record properly. Really helps. And I appreciate it.
Alright.
Now, I.
Anything else? If there's nothing else, uh, do we have a vote to adjourn? Anybody want to make a motion?
Chair.
We also have.
What's that? I didn't hear that.
Uh, we also have the, uh, minutes from the previous meeting to vote on.
I'm sorry about that.
Um, which is a massive document. When I printed it out, it was nine pages.
Move approval.
Oh, my.
Uh, but it's just. Will you hear it?
I moved, I moved approval. I, I was here.
You were here and I was here and, uh.
You weren't, that's right.
And Wayne was here and that was it.
Well.
Yes.
I, and I'll second the move to approve the minutes. And, uh.
So do we have a vote? Roll call vote to approve the minutes?
I, I'd say yes.
Matt Barnes, yes.
And.
Wayne Piagie, yes. Sorry about that.
I was going to.
Aaron Trigenti, that's staying.
Yeah.
I was going to say, if Dave was here, it would probably be a better thing to approve it.
No, it doesn't. We have a majority of the board present, so. The, the, actually, you only need to have a four and a majority vote. If, if you only had a free member, it's two of the three that approve. So.
So Wayne, he's.
Is he here or giving?
I'm sorry.
He, he goes. Thanks for.
I didn't hear a word. I didn't. What's that?
That, I was, I was thanking Glenn for remembering we needed to approve the minutes.
Oh. So we vote, we voted on the minutes or no?
Yes, we did.
Okay, excellent. Pam, am I missing anything else?
Um, just the last two items on the agenda. One is review mail. Um, any mail that was submitted to the zoning board has been distributed to them. And the last item would be adjourned.
Alright. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Hang on one second. I have a, a question. This may be the wrong time to bring it up. But a whole bunch of us got this letter from Cone, Kenny, and.
No.
Oh, got it.
That's not on the agenda.
Can't build this guy for the new one.
No, but you know. I kind of like to know what's going on.
That's not on the agenda. You can discuss that. I'm sorry.
I got it.
Sorry, Wayne. I had to reject.
No, no, don't, no, don't be sorry. Not at all, not at all. So do we have a motion? What's that?
Move to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Yep.
All members?
Aye.
Matt Barnes, aye.
Aaron Trigenti, aye.
Ray Gargan, aye.
Wayne Piagie, aye.
Yeah.
Glenn wants to stick around.
No, Glenn is, uh, aye also.
Thank you, gentlemen, for getting us through this.
Thank you, Wayne. You did great.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Pam, for everything you did and Jerry. Everybody have a nice day.
Good night, Wayne.
Thank you.
For adjourned.
Aye.